And acknowledging that we work, live, and play in the city of Port Alberni, which is situated on the unceded territories of the Hoopacheset and Sashat First Nations. We do have an agenda in front of us. Are there any late items to add from councilors? Seeing none, and I should just recognize as well that we have Counselor Solda and I think Counselor Patola online as well. Thank you. Okay, would somebody like to, sorry, any late items from our corporate officer?
No late items, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would somebody like to move approval?
So.
Move approval of the agenda by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame. Seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And we have minutes from the special meeting and regular meeting of council on April 28, 2025 to be adopted.
Moved to adopt.
Moved to adopt by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame. Any comments on the motion? Minutes. Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Okay, and we have a delegation today, and that is from MNP Chartered Accountants, 2024 Financial Statements. We will welcome Corey to present whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, council. Just give it a second to get the presentation going. There we go. Okay, thanks. So, as in prior years, I've got a short presentation to go through with respect to your 2024 financial statements and the audit process. Before I get in, a big thank you to staff in the Finance Department and throughout the city for going through the audit process with us. Again, this year, we really appreciate their assistance. There we go. Doesn't want to go.
Just have to actually let the Dino.
Okay.
Because it's shared out from here.
Sure, okay. Can I go to the next slide?
Next slide?
Yeah.
Give us a wait.
Okay, yeah. And, sorry, actually, we'll pause here. A reminder that the numbers that I'm going to go through are on what we call a consolidated basis. So when you get reports from staff throughout the year, you might get capital fund or operating or reserves in isolation, bringing it all together as required by the local government accounting standards, to put it on a consolidated basis. So starting with a statement of financial position, or your balance sheet at the end of 2024, you can see the city has cash investments of $32.9 million. Cash, if you include receivables, with the cash investments, you get this total financial asset number of 47.6. Debt being paid down on schedule has decreased from 21 million to 20.3, and total liabilities have decreased from 82 million to 61 million. Now, the big number in that change is an update to the estimate for asset retirement obligations and bringing that liability amount down. So the net debt position of the city has also decreased about $20 million to 13.9 million. Tangible capital assets being managed have also decreased as a result of that asset retirement obligation adjustment to 185 million, and the accumulated surplus at the end of the year is 172.5. I'll get into that number in a future slide. Looking at the statement of operations, or the income statement for 2024, you can see total revenues of 58.9, very consistent with the prior year, and total expenses of 54.2 million. So an increase year-over-year reflecting inflation and a few of your regular operating costs. One item, important item to note there, the budget is $42.9 million of expenses, but the budget doesn't include that amortization expense where the accounts are depreciating the assets. So it is not comparable to the 54. There's about nine, almost $10 million of amortization expense in the year. So if you were to add that to the 42.9 on the 2024 budget, you would get very close to the actual expenses. And then an accounting surplus at the end of the year of $4.7 million. So I say accounting surplus because we put lots of adjustments in there and non-cash items like amortization, but the cash flow statement is more like what you're thinking about when you look at your budget. So regular operations of the city brought in just about $10 million of cash flows. Capital spending throughout the year is $12.8 million. So some of the significant projects on childcare spaces, connect the keys, and in the Somas Mill site. You did get a dividend up from the community forest of $300,000, similar to the, or consistent with the prior year. You moved cash out of investments to use on some of those capital projects, so $5.9 million. Repaid debt on schedule of $526,000 and didn't have any new debt proceeds for 2024. So there's a net cash inflow at the end of the year of $2.8 million. The next slide will show the accumulated surplus. So the 172 million, most of that is in that middle line equity and tangible capital assets. So that's $144 million. That's the historic cost of the assets depreciated over time minus the debt that's still associated with them. So that's not a cash balance. Then there is a small deficit in the capital fund of $1.5 million, as well a deficit in the operating fund of $5.8 million, and reserves have 35.9. So that reserves balance is the one where there's cash and money set aside for future projects. So the next slide will shift gears out of the numbers and into the audit and the audit findings. We're happy to be providing a clean audit opinion this year. We're satisfied that the financial statements and summary that I just went through there are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with public sector accounting standards. The last step is council approval here today at the meeting. When we're going through our audit, we look at the controls, we make sure you're getting accurate financial reporting, we sample transactions throughout the year. We don't look at everything. To do our audit testing, we use this number of materiality, and that 2.65 million is based on about 5% of your annual revenues. So we look at all the large transactions over that amount, and we sample underneath. We didn't find any irregularities that would impact the financial statements, no evidence of unusual transactions, illegal or questionable payments. So that's good news in a clean audit. Again, a big thank you from management and staff for going through the audit process with us again this year. And I will confirm our independence. So MNP didn't do any other projects with the city this year, from January 1, 2024, all the way to today, that would impair my ability to give you an independent audit opinion. And I will wrap up there. Happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for the audit. I appreciate that. Not much of a question, just for the people at home who are watching. All the information that you've put on today is part of our agenda, as well as the actual audit itself is there as well. So just for the people at home, if you want to access that, you can just access the agenda for today. But thank you very much for your independent report.
Thank you, counselor.
Perfect. Counselor Solda or Counselor Patola, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move that the auditors' report in the 2024 audited financial statements prepared by MNP Chartered Accountants be received and approved as presented.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame. Seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming today. All right, we have no unfinished business today, so we'll move on to, no staff reports, on to bylaws. Item number one is the final adoption of bylaw enforce, bylaw notice enforcement bylaw number 5128-2025. Counselor Dame, would you like to read this one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, certainly. I move that bylaw notice enforcement bylaw number 5128-2025 be now finally adopted, signed by the mayor and corporate officer and numbered 5128.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Dame, seconded by Counselor Mealy. And seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And item number two, we have respectful behavior bylaw number 5129, and we will go to our Director of Corporate Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today's report requests that council introduce and provide three readings of the respectful behavior bylaw. The bylaw is intended to define and regulate inappropriate behaviors in city facilities and at city hosted events and programs, promoting a safe, respectful, and inclusive environment for all. The city has an obligation to provide a safe workplace for its employees, and similarly, residents and visitors to city facilities should be able to participate in civic life without experiencing violence, harassment, or discrimination. Proceeding with the proposed bylaw would enable city staff to respond consistently and equitably to incidents of harassment, violence, and other inappropriate behavior. It also provides a clear, transparent process for incident investigation, enforcement, and appeal. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counselor Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It says that the city is responsible for providing a safe work environment for city staff, and it talks about what happens at city council meetings. I'm wondering why city members of city council are not included in this as well, because I feel that we should also be able to have a safe working environment during council meetings.
Thank you, Counselor Haggard. So we do have everyone captured underneath this bylaw. Where the difference pertains is that council would fall primarily under the council code of conduct for their interactions, but council would be covered under this behavior bylaw if there was instances in a council meeting.
So we would be included under city staff versus city staff? Okay, thank you for that. Can I ask one more question? There has, there is a lot of social media conversations regarding city staff and council members. Has there been any consideration regarding having a social media policy to deal with not only staff but council members under social media? Because right now, I feel that staff and council members don't get any support from the municipality.
Thank you for the question. Yes. So you will note that within this bylaw, it does capture online forums as well. So city websites or any other engagement platforms, it would cover that. And yes, as well to your other question, a social media policy is under development right now in the Communications Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move that respectful behavior bylaw number 5129-2025 be now introduced and ready first time.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame. Seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried. Thank you. Carried. Any opposed? None opposed. Sorry. Counselor Patel, I see you on the screen now, but you're a little bit delayed. So just put your hand up if you need anything. Okay, and Counselor Mealy, if you want to continue?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move that respectful behavior bylaw number 5129-2025 be read a second time.
Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame. Any comments? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried, none opposed. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move that respectful behavior bylaw number 5129-2025 be read a third time.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame. Any comments? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? Carried. Thanks. Okay, and we will move on to correspondence for action. Item number one from the PA Picklers Pickleball Facility Expansion. And we have a letter here, and maybe staff can give an overview, and then we may have some questions. And I know we do have members of the group in the audience if council has any questions that can't be
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have some correspondence from the PA Picklers, and so what they're requesting today, they have a plan for a conversion of two tennis courts to make six permanent pickleball courts, conversion of one tennis court into a multi-use court, and preservation of two dedicated tennis courts. And they're looking to have some council support for when they apply for grants, and just asking that we would dedicate those monies towards this initiative.
Thank you. Counselor Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a very active group. They presently have over 500 active players in the community. And this proposal that was referred to outlines enhancements to facilities for both tennis and pickleball. They are committed to launching a fundraising campaign. It is their intention to fully fund the tennis court improvements for public use. So the tennis courts are not intended to be taken away. They'll just be enhanced and beautified. Currently, there's only one dedicated public pickleball court in the city, limiting visitor access unless they invest in and pack their own portable nets. Perspective retirees consider relocation to Port Alberni frequently inquire about the availability of pickleball facilities. Neighbor communities both east and west are investing in dedicated pickleball infrastructure in recognition of its rapid global growth. And presently, the group in, has, the group's facilities, they are very limited to host tournaments for the community, which will bring in people to the community, which in turns will spend money in restaurants and so on and so forth. So the city has given thousands of dollars to different groups. This group is not asking for any money whatsoever. They're just asking for the opportunity to improve city-owned assets at absolutely no cost to the taxpayer. So I do have a couple of motions if I may read them. The first one is that the city provide a letter of support to the Pickleball Association for the upgrades to existing facilities so they can apply for grant opportunities.
Thank you. So moved by Counselor Dame, or sorry, moved by Counselor Haggard, seconded by Counselor Dame, and this is just for the letter of support?
Yes.
Okay, any comments? Counselor Solda.
There I am. I guess it's not really on the motion, but just on the pickleball and who's going to look after it. So should I wait until this motion is passed or not? Or what's your advice?
Let's do just any comments first on the motion, which, and sorry, apologies, because I did see you had your hand up before. But let's do comments on the motion first. So anything just on the letter of support, and then we'll come back to you, Counselor Solda. Okay, Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have no problem with a letter of support, but I believe the last time we talked about this in public, we talked about the Parks Master Plan and waiting for that. So I don't want to put the cart in front of the horse a little bit, but I think, and I don't mind a letter of support, but I also would like to just wait for the Parks Master Plan before that, because that was the last conversation we had at council. So I just, I'm not sure if there's a reason to change that or not. Sorry.
Thank you. And I thought we already approved a letter of support when this came to us the first time.
Thank you. And through the chair, the conversation started about possible letter of support, but then got into whether or not we wanted to reuse the tennis courts, like if we can afford to get rid of any tennis courts for pickleball, or how many tennis courts were necessary. And then I believe it was a question to the Director of Parks, Rec, and Culture about is it going to be included in the master plan, and it was. There was no formal motion at that time that was provided to administration.
Thank you. Counselor Haggard.
The reason I'd like to move forward with a letter of support is they were able to get a list of funding opportunities from both the provincial and the federal level, and they are missing those opportunities, waiting for that Parks Master Plan, which could still be months coming. Been waiting for this master plan for quite some time, and we don't know how much longer it's going to be. So they will miss those opportunities.
Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, through you, Counselor Haggard. I appreciate the information. I just, I guess, I guess what I'm looking at is two things. Is, first of all, yeah, like a letter of support and going for grant funding is totally fine. But if the Parks Master Plan says that we can't give up any tennis courts, I'm not sure that's what it will be. But if they does, then we've got a group that's gone out with our letter, gone out and got funding for a project that they can't do. So I guess that's, again, it's a cart before the horse kind of deal. Again, I'm not, I'm not opposed to a letter of support right now. I would just hate for the end result to be, no, that, that's not what we should do as a city, because once the master plan comes out. So that's all it is. I just, you know, again, I will support a letter of support, but I just, I just want to make sure that my feelings are heard on this, is that I just, I'd rather wait for that Parks Master Plan before the final. But I understand how funding goes, and you got to jump on it right away, so.
Thank you. Any other comments on the letter of support? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And Counselor Haggard?
My second motion, that the city work closely with the Pickleball Association on these upgrades, proposed upgrades, including design and cost estimates.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Haggard, seconded by Counselor Dame. Discussion? Counselor Mealy.
Go back to the same thing. Again, I don't, I'm not opposed to it. I just think that we're putting the cart before the horse on, especially on this, is we're looking at design and all that kind of stuff, and we haven't determined what's good for the tennis courts yet. Is it giving all of it to the pickleball, or two, or one, or none? So again, I, I'm not, I'm not saying no, and I love the pickleball people, and I love going out and getting funding, and they're doing a lot of work on their own. But I just want to make sure that we're not negatively impacting the other users as well, and we just won't know that until the Parks Master Plan's done.
Thank you. Counselor Solda and then Counselor Patola. Counselor Solda, you're muted.
Maybe that's a good thing. No, I'm just kidding. So I understand what Counselor Mealy is getting at and everything like that. And, but when you do grants, you need to have a plan. You need to have it out, you know, like what your expenses are and stuff like that before grants are allocated. They just don't give you because you asked for $100,000 or whatever the amount may be. But what I'm curious to know is, if it does go through, and I think pickleball is great, and tennis is great, badminton's great, but who is going to be in charge? Like, so we have a tournament. Do they sign, go to Parks and Rec and book the courts? Who's got the ownership? Who gets the right to decide who gets to be on the courts? Same as tennis, if the tennis players want to get on the court, how is that going to be worked out? So that's my concern. So we don't have, hey, I paid for this, and I'm not saying that they're going to do that. I'm just hypothetically putting it out there. This is what we put the money into. We're in here out, right? So how is that going to look at? Like, and also tournaments, would they still go the same with getting insurance and that to have that opportunity to have a tournament there? I don't, I'm not sure how that the picture is going to work. So I kind of need a little more information on that, or somebody can say something. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll go to our CIO.
Thanks for the question. I believe for a tournament, it would work like any other tournament that happens in the city. You know, if they need more courts that are dedicated to pickleball than are allocated, then probably would come to council for a decision on the weekend, just as we do with lots of fields for lots of sports. If there is a big event that comes to town that wants to use all our fields, we have a conversation at the council level and move it forward. If it's a smaller tournament that doesn't evolve too many fields, and we don't have challenges in booking the amount of space, then it would just go through Parks and Rec, and we would allow that event to happen. Again, if there was funding requests for other items, again, the CIP program would probably be used. So really, just like any other tournament in the town. As for ownership of the courts, if it was a grant on behalf of the municipality, the owner of the asset would be the city, and it would be up to the city's policies and procedures for how we would ascertain who's using it, and we would follow that. Again, a group can get grant funding for the city. We can build it. At the end of the day, the city would be the owner of the asset and responsible for it.
And, sorry, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor Solda.
Follow up? Okay, insurance, too. Who's responsible? That would be the city, since we are the owner of the asset.
Thanks for the question. I believe that insurance would follow the same aspect again. You know, if it was a tournament, we usually do get listed as additionally insured. If it's just recreational use and people book out, it would go through our rec desk. They would pay for the courts, and the city would assume the liability.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll go to Counselor Patola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to say, I'm in full agreement with Counselor Mealy. Sending a letter of support is one thing, and certainly helps to move the process along. Committing city resources is quite another thing. That implies, if not, that we are fully supporting this program right through its to, its total fruition, that we are committing budgetary dollars from the city to it. And I think that that is a decision that must be based on the Parks Master Plan. The, it's, simply to say, oh, we're not putting money into the asset, does not diffuse the fact that city employees don't work for free. I wish they did. We'd have a much different budget if that was the truth. But I would want them to, and they don't. And so directing the employees of the Parks Department, whether they be directors or, or other levels of administration, to expend time means that we are committing the fees for that time. And I think that is, potentially would have an effect on the budget or on the services that are currently offered. And therefore, those decisions should only be made in the context of the Parks Master Plan. So whilst, I would be very hopeful that the Pickleball Association receives funding and that the city's support is helpful in receiving that funding. I'm not at the point of committing any further city resources to a program, but we don't know the effect it will have on the other existing programs.
Thank you, Counselor Patola. Counselor Haggard, could I get you to reread the motion, please?
I move that the city work with the Pickleball Association on the proposed upgrades, including design and cost estimates.
Thank you. I'm going to speak in support of the motion. I appreciate the intent to wait until after the master plans. But I think that sometimes we get really caught up in getting all the planning done before we do anything. And I think that, like, it is so known, the speed at which pickleball growth is, is, is growing at, or pickleball interest is growing at, that I feel like there's no doubt in my mind that there is a need for additional pickleball courts. I would like to see, especially when we have a group who's willing to put their time and energy into sourcing funding for us. We know with other projects, you know, those groups burn out sometimes, and unfortunately, especially when met with, with a lack of support, or kind of feeling like they, they can't get the city on board, the efforts kind of peter off. I mean, I think that we were all hopeful for the new skateboard park to be grant funded. And, you know, as I know that group is still working on it, but I think that they haven't felt the support from the city that they intended. And as a result, their efforts have really slowed down, and the progress on that project has slowed down. I would really like to see us support this initiative, because there's no question, we need more pickleball courts in this community. I appreciate the thought for displacing users and the tennis users as well, although I do not think we have much of a tennis, much of a tennis, like, group in this community. I don't know if there is even an active tennis organization. And I guess my question to either staff or to the Pickleball Association would be, once courts are amended, if we were to, you know, put these pickleball courts on the existing tennis courts, which I imagine is the cheapest way to do it, once courts are changed to pickleball, can you still play tennis on them? Like, just like the pickleballers play on the tennis courts right now, could the tennis players play on the pickleball courts? Counselor Haggard.
Part of their proposal, it says preservation of two dedicated tennis courts. Maintain two tennis courts exclusively for tennis players to ensure the needs are met and recreational balance is preserved.
Thank you. Then I have no concern about this. I go to those courts often, and I never see people there playing tennis. So not to say that there is not a tennis, you know, a need to have tennis courts in the community, but I don't think that this is going to drastically take away. If it does, I think that's a fantastic problem to have, and let's talk about building more tennis courts. But I, I think this is a great initiative, and hopefully, we can support it and see some funds come into our community to build something positive. Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate the way you look at it. And when I drive by, there are people playing tennis there. So it's, you know, the way I look at it is the pickleball court, pickleball people may be more organized. So, but we shouldn't discount the tennis players because they're not organized. And usually, in my experience, this is what happens, is one group is organized, comes to council, we make changes, and then the other group gets organized real quick and comes back and asks us. So that's the only thing I'm trying to avoid at this point. I have to recommend, I have to commend the pickleball group for what they've done, especially how they propose their plan and how they set it out. So, but again, I just want to make sure that the existing users that are out there won't be displaced. And again, maybe that is a good problem to have, and maybe we need to make more tennis courts. So, so thank you very much for listening.
Absolutely. Thank you. Totally agree with your comments. Counselor Haggard.
I apologize, Madam Mayor. Point number two in their proposal says conversion of one tennis court into a multi-use court. Transform one, transform one tennis court into a multi-use court that can accommodate both tennis and pickleball. So they're still very thoughtful of the tennis players in the community.
Thank you. Counselor Solda, did you have another comment?
I do. Thank you. And don't forget badminton in this mix, too, you guys. Just, there's badminton players. I actually have seen tennis players out last summer on the tennis courts. So anyways, I just want to go back and say, hey, you know, when the all-inclusive park, as well as the skateboard park, they all had a plan before they went for grants and that. And I really think that would do the pickleball. And I really think that would do the pickleball just have to have a plan. They have to have, this is what we want to do. Here's how much it's going to cost. Here's, here's the scope of the project and I. I believe that's important before grants are allocated to anyone. So if you're not. If you don't have it in order, you're not going to get the grants. So it doesn't mean. And if they don't get the grant, well, at least they have the plan and it's ready and you they know how much it is. You can't expect. I look at it, you can't expect them to figure out how much it's going to cost without. Staff's help. And the reason I'm saying that is that staff know where to get. The whatever is needed for a pickleball court and. And they get it at wholesale while as much wholesale as they get, but more so than a pickleball player would go get. So that's my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
They do have a proposed plan that's in the agenda along with cost and quotes.
Yeah. Sorry, I don't have it opened in front of me. I'm on one screen here.
Thank you so much. Councilor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do recall when the presentation was made by the Pickleball Association. And it was quite in-depth and quite well thought out. And I commended them for not trying to juxtapose their interests. And pit them against the interests of any other group. They were particularly keeping recreation. Growing instead of exchanging different types of recreation. So my concern is not with. The veracity of their application or their their intended plans. My concern is. As somewhat demonstrated by your comments, Madam Mayor, with regards to the skateboard park or. Councilor Solis' comments about the inclusive playgrounds. That we did not commit resources to either of those because we were awaiting the master plan. And if I get the recollection of reasoning, that's at least what I understand my reasoning was. But we didn't commit city resources to it. We're now debating whether to commit city resources to another plan, which. The effect is that it takes away from the ability to finally. Adopt the master plan and commit to that plan with the resources we have. So this isn't a question of should there be pickleball courts, should there be tennis courts, should there be something else? The quest, the, this is simply a question of committing. A limited amount of city resources on fair and equal basis. And to deny other groups the involvement of city staff and the support of city staff. At one end and then provide it to another group, which already has the same level of planning. For lack of a better word, I will say it's exact, but as the plans that were prevented by the playground group, as the plans that were presented by the skateboard group. So I don't see why one group should have preference over another. Again, in the commitment of city parks resources. I would apply the promotion of recreational activities equally across these groups and more groups. But I would do it within a structure that we understand is going to be the most feasible, the most efficient. So this group has indicated that it won't cost the city any money, that they will raise all the funds. So by committing city funding to it, we're directly contradicting their basis for their approach. And we're again denying city funding that may have assisted those other groups, which now there you pointed out, in attaining their funding. So it's a question of process. To me, it's a question of process and it's a question of equality amongst the groups. To ensure that the city gets the best bang for its buck, increases recreation as much as it can. And promotes a safe, healthy community. So it's not denying. I wouldn't say this is denying the pickleball group, but it would be ensuring that we support all groups to the best of our abilities. And singling out one group, I don't think is the way to do it.
Thank you, Councilor Petola. Appreciate your comments. I will just say that we actually did provide city staff to work with the. The skate park group. So. We actually already have sort of like given out that resource. It's if it's a question of equality, we have done the same for the skateboard, skate park group. Actually, last council term, we did that and then we've provided some some limited staff resources this term as well. So. Throughout their project, I was making reference to sort of a different area where I think they didn't feel supported and the group sort of fizzled out. But it wasn't to do with not providing staff. We did provide them the resources to proceed forward. But I think your your comment is fair. This is not perfect process. And while I think we do want to follow process wherever possible, as much as possible, I also think that sometimes. Some long-drawn-out processes like something as large as a master plan can get in the way of progress when there's an opportunity in front of us. In my opinion, it's not a question of if we need more pickleball courts in our community. I think that. Has been proven, you know, over many years as the sport has continued to grow. And I'm not personally worried about the impact of of maybe this proceeding and then displacing other groups. Because I think we can find ways to to make all of the groups or to make room for all of the groups. And also, if we end up in a position where we need to build more courts, I think that's a really positive thing. It shows that we have active people in our community. Community health and activity levels are probably one of the most important things in terms of health indicators. And as we know, we have. Some very concerning health indicators in our community. So if we can provide more recreation opportunities for people to stay active, then I think that's a really positive. Thing to do and a good problem to have if we end up having to build more courts. Councilor Haggard.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the Pickleball Association has submitted detailed drawings and a proposed plan to Parks and Recreation. So when I say work with the city for these upgrades, it is city-owned facilities. They can't just go out there and do whatever they want to. They want to make sure that they do things correctly and that they work with the city staff. But the plans have already been made, their polls are made, they've got cost estimates ready to go. So all that work has already been done on their own.
Thank you. Appreciate all the comments that have been made. I think, you know, as has been pointed out, this is not a perfect process. And however council decides to go on this, I'm sure will be understood. Everyone is trying to support. Support the sport while ensuring that we do move forward in the best way possible. So I will call the question on the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much for the discussion, everyone. And thank you. Councilor Mealy is just pointing to my no clapping rule. But we we appreciate it. Councilor Dane.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also note that in the in the the letter, there was a request that we. That we commit to allocating any funds raised by the P A Picklers exclusively towards these requested improvements. Is that something we need to formalize in a motion?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. Mike?
Thanks for the question and through the chair, I I believe that any donations that are received to the city. From a group that designates what they will be spent on, we hold them for that. So. Again, we've been doing this with several groups. Where we run into trouble is where a group raises funds but doesn't specifically say what they're used for. And then gets upset when they're used for something in recreation that isn't involved or for some other project that the city is doing for that sport. So. Again, as long as the funds when received is part of council's plan for that and we are supportive of it. Again, we can hold it in in reserve, in the Parks and Rec Reserve.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on then. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to item number two, Royal Canadian Legion, Alberney Valley Branch Number Two Nine Three and Commemorative Crosswalks. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we've received a letter from our local branch, letting us know that the Royal Canadian Legion National Headquarters has approved the design of commemorative crosswalks. And so our local branch is requesting that the city of Port Alberney install and maintain three commemorative crosswalks at the intersections of Johnston, River Road and Victoria Key.
Thank you very much. Comments? Councilor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first of all, thanks to the Legion, of course, for for coming forward and engaging the city. I think we all know that the intersection of Johnson Road, River Road and Victoria Key is under our jurisdiction as well as the province's. So it makes it kind of a little bit of a muddy water there. I I know I've said this before, maybe not in council. But when the the idea of a crosswalk has come up, I have said that there is a crosswalk needing upgrades, which is the one at Victoria Key on the one-way road to the Legion. So I wouldn't be in support of going through the rigmarole for the full. And not not only that, I mean, we're going to put a really nice crosswalk there on a high-traffic area and it's just going to get beat up like crazy. Whereas I think if we put one at the crosswalk there going into Victoria Key, it's it has more meaning to it. It's right there as you come to the Legion and everybody gets to see it. So. I guess I would, I would like to receive this letter and perhaps ask the Legion if that would be a a possible alternative that they would be in favor of.
Yeah, thank you for that. So a few things in my opinion. I think this is a fantastic initiative. I've spoken with them about it a few times at the Legion and I hope that we can get crosswalks, crosswalks done. I I go back to the high school students coming and requesting, I think, like eight different locations. For cross, orange crosswalks to be painted and council said, let's start with one, get it done. These do obviously have a cost associated as well, so it has to be a budget item. I would love to see us find the right location for the first one and then we continue, you know, moving on from there. I would imagine next steps would be talk to the Legion or staff, direct staff to work with the Legion on appropriate location. I think that's a great, very visible. Spot. Yeah, absolutely. So that might be, Councilor Mealy, a great suggestion for the first location, but let's work with the Legion on that and then come back with a cost estimate as well. I know that when the high school students brought forward the orange crosswalks, it was. Reasonably price prohibitive to do the amount of crosswalks that they that they had requested. So we started with the one and the intent obviously is that. Over time, we will continue to add to that. So I'd love to take the same approach here so that we do do something, the first one, that is really visible and. Meaningful for our community and then continue on as we can, as it kind of moves forward with budget. So. Maybe an appropriate motion would be to get started to the council, direct staff to work with the Legion on a possible location for the first crosswalk. That would be fully within the city's jurisdiction and then bring back a budget estimate. If that's, thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Mealy. Any comments from council, Councilor Sola and then Councilor Petola?
So, Madam Mayor. That whole area too is going to be upgraded eventually with the roundabout and I'm sure up in that area too is going part of highways. And we know Johnson Road is having some upgrades now. So how will that all tie in? And also, as Councilor Mealy has said. Part of it is not our jurisdiction, it belongs to highways, it's a major highway. So that is something to take into consideration. I would support the one that Councilor Mealy had mentioned. But but I'm kind of curious to know future when other organizations come to us for whatever reason. And would like a crosswalk. Will we deal them individually or is it something to look at as a policy?
Thank you. I think a policy on this would be great. And I I think as well that the province probably has a policy. And I can, I would imagine that putting them on provincial roads that are deemed highways with, you know, heavy traffic. Probably isn't the best use, just as a matter of maintenance. So I think for simplicity and to actually be able to hopefully get this done, putting it on a road where we have full control and where there is good visibility, but less traffic makes a lot of sense. So I love Councilor Mealy's suggestion. And yeah, I think, thanks, Councilor Sola, you're right. We probably could have a policy for when these things come forward. At the same time, I I think that them coming to council on a one-off basis, we can move forward with some consistency. As we potentially are here, based on the last one. Councilor Petola, did you have a question or was your hand just up remaining from last time?
My hand was up for a question or a comment.
Go ahead then.
Question. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The question would be, Madam Mayor, to the C E O. For a. Information on what the city's current naming policy and how that would affect. Crosswalks per se. I'm not sure it would exactly. And before, Madam Mayor, before the C E O answers, if I could explain a little bit further about why. I am concerned about the effect of that policy. It is that. I I think it's important to be clear. Which I try to do and maybe sometimes I fail, but. There is a difference in my mind between a D E I policy and a naming policy. A D E I policy recognizes groups or cultures in our community that we wish to ensure or recognize. That would suggest that. A acknowledgement of the L G B T Q two S plus community by a rainbow. Crosswalk is an acknowledgement that increases the D E I. A orange painted crosswalk should be a way to include the First Nations communities. With an acknowledgement of their presence and a motion of reconciliation to. Increase the D E I approach to another group that has suffered from a lack of that in the past. Naming rights are different. And when we get to. There's obviously a gray area in between and I think it's probably. Some people will decide that they sit in a different part of the gray area. But. We don't. Or we haven't been asked for the Rotary Club to have a Rotary Club crosswalk. Maybe at some point we will be. I think that that would fall more under naming rights where the Rotary Club has asked to fund the Rotary Arts District. The Jivo Club at some points in time donated money towards the Jiro Youth Centre and thus it's named and branded. Kiwanis, Kinsman, all sorts of other groups have done that with naming rights in. In a sort, not having a naming policy, but they've contributed to put their name on something. And 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 that's a specific recognition of their donation and contribution. Having the city paint sidewalks without some kind of policy around that blurs. The lines between naming rights and D E I policies. And I think although certainly Legion does represent. Tremendous sacrifice that many individuals made to our country. It is not solely made up of veterans, although that's the major part. And it is an organization. That. I think is more an organization and should be recognized by a naming right rather than a D E I inclusion. So. And the problem for me becomes when the gray area gets very blurred, such as when will we put up a. Cancer survivors crosswalk. And should we put up a cancer survivor crosswalk? And if we do, will it be the Canadian Cancer Society? Or will it be a separate crosswalk for the B C Cancer Society? Or will it in fact be a separate crosswalk for breast cancer survivors? All groups that. Arguably. Would benefit from and deserve to an extent recognition in the community. But we need to clarify, or I would like to clarify, whether or not this recognition is. Because it's a group that has failed to be recognized in the past and we are consciously including. Within our community and making a public statement that this is a part of our community. Or is it simply a method of a group wanting their interests promoted for the benefits of. The prosperity of that group, which is naming rights. So. For that reason, I wouldn't want to just jump in. Certainly. There can be a lot more discussions, such as Council Mealy suggested. But I think that discussion should go forward on the basis of we would like to. Sort this situation out rather than, oh, of course, we're going to give you. Crosswalk. It's just a matter of how much the city is going to put aside in its budget to paint it and how many we can fit in on what places. I don't think it should go forward on the presumption that it's going to happen. I think it should move forward on the understanding that it needs to happen in the appropriate manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Petola. Any other comments? And specifically, we do have a motion on the floor. Seeing no additional comments on the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thanks for the conversation, everyone. Okay, so no proclamations. Correspondents for information.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Solda.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So regarding getting a, having a policy for future, do we need to make a notice of motion or can it just be, what's the process there?
Yeah, absolutely. A notice of motion could be, I mean, you could make a motion now, but I think it is general enough as it's not specifically related to this item, but could be related to many different requests down the road. It would be fine under notice of motion or just showing up as a regular motion on our next council agenda. So whichever, whichever you prefer.
I'll wait for the next, next council meeting, we'll have a motion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, then we will go to correspondents for information, and I'll go to our Director of Corporate Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have a letter from the Ministry of Public Safety and Solicitor General in response to our letter following UBCM convention meetings, and that's, excuse me, regarding police services and sustainable funding. We also have a letter from the Ministry of Housing and Municipal Affairs, again, in relation to our follow-up letter after the UBCM convention meeting. We have a letter from UBCM, just letting us know that council's resolutions submitted to AVICC have been endorsed and will be up for consideration at the Fall Convention. The City of Enderby provided a copy of a letter they sent in response to the Economic Stabilization Tariff Response Act. And lastly, the Community Action Team providing awareness of their Horsepower for Healing event taking place on May 25th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any items counselors would like to speak to? Counselor Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a report from Island Health on transient unregulated drug poisonings in Port Alberni from January to December 2024. Sixty-three percent of deaths were males, rates of drug poisoning death is higher among the 25 to 44 age group, and forty-six cents of deaths occurred in private residences. So the Community Action Team thought about how can we attract, get information out to this demographic? So they came up with the idea of a car show. So they'll be having the car show on May 25th, 10:00 to 2:00 at the Fall Fairgrounds. They will also have tables set up with different service providers there with information on the opioid crisis. So I would like to encourage members of council, staff, and the public to attend this event. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other items councils would like to speak to? Okay, seeing none, would somebody like to move correspondence for information? Moved to receive by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And on to a report from in camera, I will go to our Director of Corporate Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council releases for public consumption notice of its intent to enter into a lease agreement with Derek and Lisa Dovell for Unit Nine in Spirit Square at Harbor Key for a five-year term for Munch Gelato and artisanal gelato business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On to council reports, and would any counselors like to highlight any activities? Okay, seeing none, would somebody like to move receipt? Moved to receive by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame, seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And item L, we have new business. Item number one is our corporate strategic plan review. I'll go to our corporate officer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So on April 29th, 2025, council had, held a strategic plan review session to assess the progress of ongoing projects and initiatives, discuss upcoming developments, and ensure alignment with the overall strategic direction of the municipality. Main projects and initiatives for 2025 were reviewed, including opportunities for infrastructure grants, community safety, service levels, opportunities for revenue generation, and various other ongoing initiatives as outlined in the Now, Next, Later Corporate Strategic Action Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would somebody like to move receipt? Moved by Counselor Haggard, seconded by Counselor Dame. Any comments on the report? Seeing none, on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And on to the next item, B.C. Transit Annual Operating Agreement, and I'll go to our Director of Finance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the city usually has a annual operating agreement that comes to us in April and May. This is based on the financial plan and the draft budget that is provided from B.C. Transit. This budget also includes some of the features such as the Free Election Day, transportation, we have New Year's Eve, transportation is provided, and the grad, grad pass for the month of June that often is provided. So these are all within the level of service that we provide over the years, and we continue with this annual operating agreement.
Thank you very much. Any comments? Counselor Dame?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make that motion. I move that the mayor and corporate officer be authorized to execute the B.C. Transit 2025 to 2026 Annual Operating Agreement between the City of Port Alberni and British Columbia Transit effective April 1st, 2025 to March 31st, 2026.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Counselor Dame, seconded by Counselor Haggard. Any comments? Seeing none, on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you. And on to question period, this is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of council on recommendations made during the course of the meeting. Seeing no members of the public today, we will move on from this. Would somebody like to move adjournments? Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you, everyone.